Good afternoon, my name is Kristin Lopez and I am the Port Jervis City School District Board Clerk. I hereby call the reorganizational meeting of July first, twenty twenty-two to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I will now administer the oath of office to newly elected and re-elected members and to the superintendent of schools. Ann Marie Foster, would you please stand? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ann Marie Foster.
I, Ann Marie Foster.
Will support the, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board members.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Mr. Hockenberry, would you please stand up? Repeat after me. I, Michael Hockenberry.
I, Michael Hockenberry.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And re-elected school board member, William Harris, please rise. Repeat after me. I, William Harris.
I, William Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Beautiful. Thank you. Mr. Riddell, would you please stand? And repeat after me. I, Michael Riddell.
I, Michael Riddell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
I'll come to you.
All right. Beautiful. Thank you so much. At this time, we are going to hold nominations and election for the board president and vice president. May I have a motion and a second to open nominations for school board president?
I'll move it.
Judy?
Second.
Annie? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please raise your hand if you would like to make a motion for the nomination of a candidate for school board president. Bill Harris?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hockenberry.
Do I have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for school board president?
I would just like to say that I would vote for Bill Hockenberry due to the fact of his knowledge, expertise, and experience with the building projects that are being completed.
May I have a motion and a second then to close the nominations for school board?
Move it.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of William Hockenberry as school board president?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Judy and Kara? All right, at this time, may I have a motion and a second to open nominations for school board vice president?
I'll move it.
Bill? And please raise your hand if you'd like to make a motion to nominate a candidate for school board vice president. Annie?
I would like to nominate Kara as vice president and because of helping us lead our district with her knowledge, expertise, and experience in education.
Second for the nomination? Are there any other nominations? Then at this time, I'd like to have a motion and a second to close the nominations for school board vice president? And at this point, may I have a motion and a second to approve the election of Kara Rapp as school board vice president? Bill Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, Kara Rapp, would you please stand and take your oath? Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Kara Rapp.
I, Kara Rapp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board vice president.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board vice president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, I just have to have you sign. Mr. Hockenberry, would you please stand? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William Hockenberry.
I, William Hockenberry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board president.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Kristin Lopez.
I, Kristin Lopez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school district clerk.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to you.
All right, thank you. So next, we have the reorganizational consent items. They are designation of official newspapers, radio stations, and television stations, statutory public official bonds, designation of depository, designation of establishing petty cash funds, transfer authority for the superintendent, mileage reimbursement, annual appointments for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, adoption of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three code of conduct, adoption of the policy manual for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and adoption investment numbers five-two-two-zero, five-two-two-one, five-four-one-zero, and five-four-one-one for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion, please? Flo?
I'll second.
Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next are the reorganizational action items. The first item is to assign a board member as delegate to the Orange County School Boards Association for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a volunteer for that, Mr. Harris?
If the board would like to remain in that position.
Absolutely, and thank you for doing that. May I have a motion for that? Moved by Jared. Second by Mike. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is to assign a board member as a delegate to the New York State School Boards Association for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a volunteer for that? Flo?
I don't think I could do that. I stepped in the last time, but it's like a lot.
Is it?
Yeah.
Do we have any other volunteers for that?
If you can, I will, you know, but.
I don't see any other volunteers.
I have nothing else to do on my plate, but that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Flo, I appreciate you doing that. May I have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Judy? And Bill? Motion by Judy. Second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the appointment of the board as a whole to the audit committee and a visitation committee. May I have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill. Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the building principal, acting principal resolution of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Judy?
I'll second.
Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item E, principal and acting principal resolution for special education, students being educated out of the district for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion on that? Mike?
Second.
Jared? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the CSE vendor list for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Judy?
Second.
Second Flo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the special education committee members for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Kara? Second on that?
I'll second.
Excuse me? I'm not sure at the end. You should abstain on that, Bill, please. Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Point board president and vice president as designate alternate to appoint special education and partial hearing officer for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next item I, special education and partial hearing officers for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. May I have a motion, please? Flo? Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is the section five-oh-four committee members for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Ever meant, uh, motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Judy? Second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the organ, reorganizational meeting. Moved by Bill?
Second.
Second by Annie? And that's at six-twenty. Okay, thank you. Now, a regular meeting doesn't start till seven? We can continue on? Okay, very good. Okay. All right. So I'd like to open the, uh, call the regular business meeting to order at six-twenty. May I have a motion to hold to order, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everybody would be pretty standard, please. Come on my side with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the board agenda, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris?
I'll second it.
Second by Annie? Okay. First are the administrate, uh, public comment. Kristin, can we have any?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you very much. First, administrative reports. Mr. Riddell?
Thank you very much, and first of all, welcome, Mrs. Foster, Mr. Hockenberry, uh, and of course, Bill Harris, welcome back, I guess. And say congratulations to Mr. Hockenberry and Ms. Rapp. Uh, with Dr. Walkowitz unable to attend this evening's meeting, I will cover a few items that she likely would have covered had she been here, so I think we can just view this as she yielded her time to me if I go a little long. But, uh, first off, I just wanted to, uh, to say the initial work in the high school gym is underway, and after the meeting, I encourage you to go check it out. The stripping and, um, resealing of the gym floor is complete. Within a few weeks, the meeting will take place. The finished product's going to look great, but again, I encourage for take a look at the gym floor this evening to check out the progress thus far. Summer school's off to a great start. I had the opportunity, I was up on the two-on-nine campus today, quite some time, and I had the opportunity to spend some time in the kindergarten and first grade classrooms, and it was just great to see on a beautiful day, you know, students were playing outside, but then also when you went into the classrooms, learning was going on. To see that during the summer, it's just a great feeling. And so, I noted one thing immediately was there's a tremendous energy in that what is normally our kindergarten wing, just between the teachers, the, the aides, the students. It almost felt like September, but you knew it was July. But anyway, I wanted to share one thing. I go into the one classroom and I ask the students, "How's your summer going?", right? So of course, they were all excited because they want to share everything. And so they all raised their hand and go, "Someone tell me what you love about summer so far." And the one student says, "Coming to school," which shocked me, right? I don't know if you should say that because who is that gonna tell? But it was, it was really cool to hear. So then, the other students then took that cue when the next student says, "Learning math." And these are kindergartners, but anyway, I explained to them how much that meant to me to hear that, but I just also wanted to, to share that. And granted, it's not lost on me that this was only day two. I'm not sure if I get the same response on day twenty, but nonetheless, our youngest learners are enjoying themselves. Uh, they're continuing the learning, continuing the progress, and I think it's clearly a testament to the incredible teachers and staff we have in these classrooms. Um, and, and just seeing the novel ideas that they're incorporating in the enrichment activities and really just taking learning outside of what we would traditionally see in a, in a classroom. So, speaking of novel items, I am pleased to share that the Z-Space devices that I've told the board about on a few different occasions, uh, they are in. Our IT department has unpacked them. They've, uh, received training directly from Z-Space personnel. They in turn will train a handful of teachers. Those teachers will then turn key that to other teachers, and, uh, ultimately, our goal was to get this launched for the summer program where teachers feel more comfortable taking some of those risks with the unknown. And, uh, so we've, we've met that, and I really appreciate the work of the IT department to make that happen. Uh, we do have a few of the devices here in the back of the cafeteria. I encourage you to check it out and play with them, uh, really just see all the capabilities, it really takes learning to a different level. Next, I wanted to just go over, uh, a grant that we applied for. I was hoping, it was on my calendar, that I was going to be able to come to this meeting and share great news that we in fact were awarded this grant. But, we were not denied. But when we reached out to the office that is reviewing, it is a competitive grant, reviewing our application, they said that they pushed off the review timeframe because they extended the deadline for submission. So, we may not know until right around our next meeting or potentially a couple days after. So I just wanted to provide a little overview of it because when it comes to if we do get this grant, which just to give you an idea of the value, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for five years, and is to provide, uh, child psychiatric as well as mental health and counseling in the schools using partnerships outside agencies. I am very confident, we do apply for grants and funding opportunities throughout the year. I am exceptionally confident of this grant because it is through the New York State Office of Mental Health, and our application is strong, very strong. It's strong in what we're looking to implement in our schools. It's also very strong, in my opinion, and my opinion only, because of the partnership with Access Supports, providing some of that psychiatric and counseling services. But also, what I think is a little bit of a novel mechanism is also a partnership with SUNY New College. We've been continuing to expand our partnership with the college in various entities. This year specifically was with the school counseling program, and we've really, um, just had great collaboration with, uh, the individual that oversees that program, and we're really starting to get more internship opportunities in our school districts, et cetera. But anyway, in totality, it's, it's a fantastic application, and I really wanted to bring it up this time, even though I generally like to under-promise and over-deliver and not say things until it's complete. But if we do, if we are awarded this grant, it will appear that we're trying to build something rapidly in the latter part of the summer, and that's just not the case. This has been worked months in the, in the works, but, you know, I wanted the board to know where we were with that and why we applied for that particular grant. So I will keep you posted as things develop. And finally, I know, um, John will go through, uh, capital project updates. I'll leave all of those items to Mr. Tim, but I wanted to share, uh, some information in a public format. It's information that I shared out with the faculty and staff earlier this morning, and the board is clearly aware as well. I was appointed superintendent of schools for the Marlboro Central School District at their meeting last evening. This appointment is, is effective, um, following the summer, and I just want to say that it has been an honor to be the superintendent of schools for the Port Jervis City School District. I have worked alongside some of the most dedicated and talented individuals, uh, incredible office staff that I work with each day at district office, but also in each of the buildings, in their offices, and, and always, et cetera. Innovative teachers, dedicated and talented staff, uh, all of which never stop finding ways to make students the center of everything we do, which is obviously why we're here. Uh, and also, I have to just mention an administrative team that has been nothing short of amazing to work with. I could go on and on, but I wanted to share this, uh, information regarding my appointment in this public format. And while I will be the superintendent here in Port Jervis throughout the summer, I do want to close with expressing my tremendous gratitude and appreciation to the faculty, staff, administration, and of course, the board of education for this opportunity and for the phenomenal support and collaboration I have enjoyed over the past five years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Riddell, and good luck in your new endeavors. Next, Mr. Kim?
Thank you. So first, welcome to board members and those in new positions. I look forward to working with everybody. You have my cell phone, you have my email, anytime, reach out if you have any questions. So, uh, as Mr. Riddell alluded to, I will be giving a construction update this evening. If you drive by the middle school at this park, at this point, you'll see a lot of activity. I spoke to Dennis York, who is the, the general, what's his name? Probably right ahead of you, I'm sorry. And he gave you some updates. Our general contractor, Unimac, uh, they're actually doing some demolition in the areas of the building, removing the fire escape in the back, stairs and landings from area B. They've had some additional survey, laid out excavation footing. Consorium, who, uh, is the site coordinator, or site contractor, you'll see they put the fence up, have removed some trees, have now dug into the tennis courts, and are now surveying the site, and by next week, they'll have the bus loop in front of the building all laid out. From the mechanical side, CB Strain, they're, they're demoing certain areas of the building at this point. Our Unity, which is our, the electric contractor, is performing work on circuits, uh, certain areas of the building. Plumbing is now doing certain demolition in the building, getting prepared for some plumbing. And the biggest point need to bring forward is that has, has not unified safety is, uh, in full abatement mode. They've actually done some work on stairwell two and some work up the third floor. And, uh, Mr. Riddell, you were telling me they're on schedule, if not a little bit ahead of schedule in certain, of those certain abatement, uh, areas. Yes?
Yeah, that came out of the construction meeting that we had on Tuesday morning. They were giving an overview of where they were. Uh, they provided two-week look ahead at each stage of the project, uh, for each of the contractors, and the abatement was going. They explained that they were on schedule in certain areas, and they were ahead of schedule in other areas of the building.
Excellent, so, uh, I will be giving updates so much of this every two weeks. I try to get my feet in the site every day. I was officially given a hard hat, which seems like a little. I was officially given a hard hat, which seems like a little thing that was exciting to me. So, Mr. Humphrey says I have to put my name in it. I haven't done it yet, so. But I get my Sharpie marker and I'll put my name in it as directed by him. But I will be reporting out every meeting very similar to what I did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kim. Next, there are consent agenda items. Items include A, the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting of June 21st, 2022. B is the minutes of the CPSE meetings of 6:15, 22. Minutes of the CPSE meeting, 5:24, 22, and 6:15, 22, annual reviews. Next are the minutes of the CSE meetings for 6:06, 22, 6:16, 22, 6:17, 22, 6:21, 22, 6:22, 22, 6:23, 22, and 6:27. I have a motion not to approve this. Moved by Flo?
Second.
Second by Bill Harris. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next are personnel employment items. First item is support staff position 504 Cleaner. Next item is resignation support staff position 75 Teacher Aid. Next is resignation administrative staff position 358 Director of Pupil Personnel Services. Next is the resignation support staff position 1368 School Monitor. Next is resignation support staff position 3103 Teacher Aid. Next is termination of employment number 4906. Next is appointment of instructional staff vacancy 2325 Position 211 Probationary ESL Teacher. Next is the appointment professional non-instructional vacancy 2444 Temporary Summer School Registered Professional Nurse. Next is the appointment of instructional staff vacancy 2444 Temporary Summer School Math Teacher. Next is appointment of instructional vacancy 244 Temporary Summer School Social Studies Teacher. Next is the appointment instructional staff Summer School Substitute Teacher. Next is appointment support staff Substitute Cleaner. Change in status support staff probationary to permanent status Teacher Aid. Next item is change in status support staff probationary to permanent status School Monitor. Amendment to Board Doc's personnel agenda item 21, June 21st, 2022. I have a motion on those.
I have a question. I'm not comfortable with the termination of employment. I don't know anything about that. I just don't feel I should be voting on something I don't know.
That's fine, that's fine. I understand.
There's questions to be asked at executive session, I agree.
We can, you can definitely ask questions about it in the second session, absolutely. We will be having one, so.
Yeah, and I feel the same way that, you know, I want more questions, I want more investigation.
All right. Do you want to table that until after the executive session?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, Annie, motion to table. Second by Mike. That's action item.
F.
F.
Okay. Motion to table. Okay, and that was by Annie and Mike. All in favor of tabling that?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion on the rest of the items, please?
We'll all vote it.
Excuse me?
We'll all vote it.
Okay. Bill, is that Flo? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next are action items. The first is the policy reading of policy number 7552. May I have a motion on that?
Move it.
Judy? Second?
A second.
Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second is the policy, second and final reading of policy numbers 8110, 8310, and 8330. May I have a motion on those?
Move it.
Flo and Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is the first reading of the district comprehensive improvement plan. May I have a motion on that, please? Bill? Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are the Capitol Project Contractor Change Orders and Amendments. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, Kara? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, item E is the contract, the nursing services contract between Active Care Nursing and Home Care and the Port Jervis City School District. May I have a motion on that? Annie?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next are board member items. We're going to have a discussion on committees. There's a note here, just so some of you know that some of these committees are held during the actual school time, you know? So, just so you're aware of that. The first committee, or the first one would be DLT. And we need a committee to delegate. Do we have volunteers for that? Bill?
What is that?
Excuse me? Very good. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Deer Park Liaison, Flo? And Port Jervis Liaison?
Highway.
Annie? Okay. Thank you. Education Committee, I know Debbie Lash would like to be on that. Anyone else?
I'd like to also.
Kara? And we could use one more.
Hallerby.
Excuse me?
Jake.
Great, thank you. Next is the Health and Wellness Committee. The Health and Wellness Committee, Annie?
I'll go back, I'll go back.
Flo? Thank you. Anyone else?
I really wish I could, but I'm going to treat them all during the day.
All right, so we have two so far. If anyone else decides they would like to do that, they can let us know. Mike?
May I just say?
Sure.
So, it's important to know in this may change whether or not another person must enter into that membership. That committee generally needs right before the safety committee. We generally book them at the same block of time.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, next is the Policy Committee. Mike, you wanted to be on that?
Yes, I was interested in that.
Anyone else for policy? Yes, you're right, thank you, Mike. We could use one more for policy, anyone? No?
What are you acting here at?
What are you doing?
It's one of them. It's a great committee to be on.
Yeah, it is a good committee. Okay. So, we have two, and like I said, if anyone else would like to get on later, please let me know. Next is the Safety Committee, Mike?
Yes, I'd like to.
And I believe Debbie wanted to be on.
Hallerby on that also, Bill.
Yes, thank you, Jake. We really appreciate it.
I'd like to be on it.
Okay. Very good. So, we are all set on that. Next are board member comments. Jason, anything?
Just real quick, you know, I'm sure it'll be an echoed sentiment, but Annie, Mike, welcome. Bill, Kara, congrats. And Mike, wish you the best. Congratulations.
Judy?
I would reflect that same sentiments. Congratulations to you, wish you the best in your new endeavors. Congratulations to our new board members.
Annie, any comments?
Well, I'd like to make a comment about the middle school.
Yes, yes, your mic may fall, please, Annie.
I do not want to see classes held in the middle school come September. We need to address this and look at this on other alternatives on where to place the seventh graders. They should not be near any construction site for many reasons, as of health and safety. That we should be proactive to make sure nothing happens. As an example, as we go out in the fields and stuff, we bring our AEDs right now before we never did if something happened. When the students see red, what happens is, I've seen it in the middle school, I've been in all schools, that they do think that they don't think about what can harm them or happen. They just forgot. Example would be, I don't know if anybody remembers the kids who were on the milk crates, went to the roof, belted them in the class. But, and that's it. I just feel that we should work on this. We have seven weeks until school starts. And that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Bill, anything? Mike?
It just takes a second.
Yeah, it just takes a second, Mike, it's not long, so.
I got some mic drop.
There you go, there's that.
I would just like to thank everyone who gave me the opportunity to sit on the board and hope I represented well. I'd also like to congratulate Mike on his new endeavors, wish you the best of luck. I look forward to serving our community and our students. And I do echo the sentiments of Annie in many fashions on the middle school project. I do feel there are other sites available within our city that we may be able to utilize to keep the kids out of that school, hopefully speed up that project to sooner completion where we can utilize it at a earlier period. Basically, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Flo?
I just want to say, it's the start of the summer, everybody enjoy, be safe. I think the majority of you know that I had a trip to Italy. And I really enjoyed it, it's nice coming home. But I'm thinking about, no, it's next year. But thank you, everybody. Be healthy this summer, enjoy. I'm glad the school's going, the summer school's going. And just nothing I can say, but enjoy. New members, congratulations, welcome. Mike, I don't know what to say. Maybe I'll make a phone call, I don't know. But thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Kara?
I too want to welcome the new board members. I love that, you know, you're asking questions and right out of the gate, you jump right in. I think that's great. And I look forward to working with Bill once again. I also wanted to add that my kids are loving the enrichment program, which makes me feel good that they're doing something, you know, stimulating their minds during the summer. And I do want to wish Mike the best in his new endeavors. But I also want to speak to just the district and the community. How changes can be, you know, can cause a lot of apprehension, but I'm asking you to put your trust in this board because it is a very diverse board with a lot of different areas of expertise from construction to, you know, law enforcement, food service, health, safety, education. And I'm very hopeful. And I think there are still, there are good things on the horizon for Port Jervis. Thank you.
I want to welcome all of the new board members, and especially Bill coming back. Thank you all for serving. I think it's going to be a productive year, and I appreciate it. Best of luck, Mr. Wright Allen. And great news on the grant, that was...
Well, we didn't...
I know, but I'm thinking positive.
Yes, me too.
All right, next are dates to remember. The Port Jervis City School Board of Education will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, July 19th at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. And special note here, the district-wide safety plan is available for review by the public. Appointments can be made to review the plan with the Buildings and Grounds Office by calling 845-858-3100, extension 1705, or by emailing ihendershot@bjschools.org. Next, I would like to have a motion to move into executive session.
Mike? Can I just ask one more question?
Certainly.
I know you spoke of creating or bringing back actually a Buildings and Grounds Committee?
We are, we need to discuss that as a board and...
Sure, with the forum was for it, where it was...
Yes, yeah, we need to discuss that. And it has to be, you know, something that the board would want to do overall. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate you working that up. So...
Excuse me, I do want to wish you, sorry, my mother just, you know, I do want to wish you the best.
Thanks, Annie.
In your venture, I really do. And I'd really would like to thank the community, taking the opportunity that you voted here as a board. Thank you.
So, I'd like to have a motion to move into executive session for the business of personnel and contractual items. Moved by Annie? Second by Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, yes, I was just going to... Thank you very, no, no, thank you very much. There may be action on item F, so we may be returning to take action on that, just so the public's aware of that. Thank you, okay. Motion carries. May I have a motion on item F, please?
I want to...
Yes.
We need to remove it from table.
Yes, thank you. I have a motion to remove the table of item F, please.
I'll move.
Moved by Flo?
Second.
Second by Jason?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion on letter F, please? Termination of employment? I have a motion. Moved by Flo?
I'll second.
Second by Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to return to executive session for discussion on contractual items. Moved by Kara, second by Flo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there will be no action taken?